Hey, I'm gonna call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order. Can I get roll call?
Luke Spence.
Here.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Motion for approval of the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
We gotta get back into this.
Approved. Moving on to item four, approval of the consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Session? Please vote. Moving on to the public forum, this time set aside comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda, no action may be taken. I don't have any cards filled out right now. Anyone from the public? Alright, I'm gonna close the public forum. Moving on to item six, discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding job description and salary range for the city clerk slash employee services director.
So previously, this was essentially one job description, the city clerk and the financial director, and so with Karen going to be retiring within the next three to five months, we would like to split it up because she works a lot of hours and it makes more sense to have this in two separate positions rather than one, so the city clerk will still be doing the clerk jobs and then the finance director will be overseeing and helping with the budget and everything along those lines. Filing the yearly reports, going over TIF. Yeah, so it's Karen works a lot of hours and it's, it'd be really difficult to keep those positions into one, and we've been talking about it for some time now and just wanted some feedback from the council and mayor and go from there as we are getting closer and approaching that deadline of Karen's retirement. We will need to start that process of a replacement here soon so she can start training that additional person. And so the, the salary is in line with the public works director and the police chief. And so that's where we kinda got that because they are, they do oversee a lot and all of the departments do go to the finance director to talk with them about things. So that's how we kinda came up with that range.
Just for the sake of clarity, how many hours do you think Karen does average on a week during the busiest time of year, like when you're prepping the budget?
Ninety-seven to a hundred and ten.
A week?
Oh, no, bi-weekly. So probably around fifty hours a week.
Then, to be clear, this is a finance, not direct, finance director, not an assistant.
Well, it'd be the finance director and the reason we put assistant city administrator.
This is the clerk.
Oh, we're.
The first ones to clerk.
Okay.
We're just talking about that right now.
Oh, so, yeah, so this is just a clerk, yeah, employee services director, yeah, so we're changing the title a little bit as well.
So are we taking two positions that we currently have and just kinda delegating some more, or are we going, going to take a single position plus a position we already had and add another one?
We're splitting the finance side of things out of the clerk and creating a new position off of that. We're adding a little bit more to the city clerk position.
Will we then add another person to the office?
That's a good question, I don't believe so, but we'll just have to figure out the exact duties that the city clerk and figure out if that person needs to hire an additional person. If we would be hiring, it'd be additional like deputy clerk or utility clerk or something along those lines.
So I have another kind of follow-up question, does that impact the role that Erin has? And I don't know the title of that joke.
No, no, it technically wouldn't. I guess it really depends on who's in that role.
My kind of understanding it that we're kinda taking administrator and clerk and making a third position, so the same jobs of those two are being shared by three people kind of with the assistant admin and the.
Yeah, so Karen and I work closely with the budget, but she's the one that's really goes through the budget and she sends everything off, does all of the reports, the TIF reports, the debt reports, everything that gets sent to the state. And the budget alone is a, is really a full-time job because she has to review it on a daily basis, on a regular basis. On top of the financial side of things, she does a lot of the clerk side of stuff as, as well, and so because she does all that, that is why we need to split the part, that's why we'd like to split that up so we can separate it and really the clerk will have the clerk duties and the finance director will be strictly focusing on the, on the finance side of things.
Is this a, a setup that's similar in other cities, kind of in our situation or size?
Yeah, so, I mean, one off the top of my head that I can think of is Adele, they have a, their finance director is the city assistant city administrator slash finance director, and then they also have the city clerk. And then they also have the city administrator. Clear Lake, they have a city administrator, a finance director and a city clerk as well, and both of those are very comparable to the size of Nevada. Clear Lake, I think, is roughly around seven thousand, Adele's sixty-eight hundred or something along those lines. So those are the two that I can think of that are closely related to the size of Nevada that would be comparable to it.
I'll move to approve city clerk employee services director.
Second. Any discussion?
I thought when I walked in here eight years ago, I was told Karen was never gonna be allowed to retire. I don't mind, we're having this conversation, but.
That's not true.
Okay, seeing the other discussion, please vote. Alright. Approved. Next item, discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding job description and salary range for assistant city administrator slash finance director, that's.
Yep. And so, yeah, the assistant city administrator, the reason we put that in there is because right now, if I'm out of the office for meetings or a conference or something along the, those lines, people do go to go to Karen and talk with her about it and then Karen reaches out to me and we discuss everything. So we really wanted a clear line of path if I'm gone or absent in a meeting or something along those lines, so the, the clarity of who to go to is the reason why we put the assistant city administrator in there.
Well, I think it's pretty impressive, we gotta make two jobs to cover one, so thank you for doing what you've done for as long as you've done it.
I'd hate to hear you.
That's okay, I'm just saying thanks.
He should say thank you.
Say nice.
Thank you for doing a few jobs.
Thank you.
Okay, you're awesome, it's fine.
Well, it also would seem like the finance aspect is important in every discussion, too.
Really a major part in every decision that we make.
Is there a strong market for applicants for these positions, you think? We're not at that point yet, but.
I don't know, that's a great question, I hope there is. I know.
She's shaking her head.
What'd she say? Yes?
She's shaking her head.
No.
They're just, they're challenging positions.
Yeah. Yeah.
City government positions as well are challenging at the moment now.
I know when I reached out to specifically Clear Lake and I was talking to him about it, he said, I hope I never have to go through a change like that, so it does scare me a lot. Karen is a great person, a hard worker, she knows what she's doing. She really knows the, the budget and really the city inside and out and has a lot of knowledge and so it's it's gonna be difficult when she leaves and it's going to be major role to fill, and so I think it does worry everybody that works.
This is why the timeline, I can understand that, the transition's really gonna be critical.
When are we hoping, I mean, I mean, I saw the timeline, but ideally, when, would you hope if everything worked out?
If everything works out, you know, everything gets approved tonight, we plan on sticking to that timeline unless we don't have any viable candidates and then we'll have to push that out again, but Nevada is a very great community and I think we'll have several people interested in it and I was going to reach out to a few people, but some of those other people have already accepted jobs elsewhere. They're out of the question right now, so we'll, we'll see how it pans out.
Well, moved to approve the city assistant city administrator finance director.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I do think adding that tag as the assistant also gives us some stability in the event, in the future, if we have turnover at the top two, that does provide a chain of command still in that interim time, so I, I do like that part of it.
Any other discussion? Please vote. Okay, it's been approved. Do your thing. Moving on to the next item, resolution number nineteen, resolution approving allocated capacity agreement for wastewater services between city Nevada Iowa and Burke Marketing Corporation.
I would like to table this as well. We did get some information back today from Burke regarding the agreement as well as the sewer use charges for the first reading and I think we, we should have it by the next one, but really it came down to the ordinance, the ordinance that they had was a little bit older and the, the rates that we are proposing are a little bit different than the rates that they were seeing, so I think they had six dollars for user charges for a thousand and it's actually six dollars and ten cents for user charge, so they're checking everything over, I know Erin's been in contact with them today, talking with them. What else would you say, Erin?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think for purposes of this evening, we always like the city to have a signed version of the agreement before we act on it, we do not have that as we sit here today. I have been in conversations with legal counsel for Burke and really the, really where we're at, and, and this will be for, or actually I have number nine as well. The city staff, we've taken the position that in the ordinance itself, we need to have the Burke amount, the amount that Burke is gonna pay towards those monthly service fees. There was a draft of the document that just referenced the amortization schedule that is attached to the agreement, so you've seen that as exhibit G to the agreement. SRF, the, the loan funding requires that we be able to produce through our rate ordinance amounts sufficient to cover the debt service. And so we've taken the position we actually have to have that in the ordinance rather than just referencing the schedule. And so that's where, that's where we're at right now. I'd love some feedback if you have that, but otherwise, if we just need a little bit more time to come to terms with what everybody is comfortable with as it impacts both the agreement and the rate.
Yeah, so that, they are, we would like it in the ordinance because SRF is saying that we, we are required to list that out. And so I, I don't think Burke really wants that in the ordinance, so we real, I really need feedback on what you guys would prefer, that way we can move forward with Burke and make that decision and gotta know whether you guys wanna in the ordinance or not. Because currently it's just in the development agreement, it's the scheduled G that is in there, which is not in the ordinance. But in the ordinance is where we list out their specific payment, monthly payment to the city.
What's the disadvantage to it not being in the ordinance?
What's that?
What's the disadvantage to it not being in the ordinance?
Well, really it comes down to the SRF requirements and they are, they are telling us that we need to pass by ordinance what those rates are and because they are part of the rate. Karen and I both believe that it should be required to be in the actual ordinance and not listed, check schedule G, so if if a regular citizen, you know, wasn't privy, privy to some of the information that we're discussing tonight, scheduled G on the development agreement or didn't know where to find it, it would be hard for them to locate it outside of just looking at the ordinances. So again, it's really, to me, it just really matters on getting through this and getting everything passed, so I just need to know feedback from you guys on what you would prefer, I, I'm, I'm okay with either or. I don't know if there is any repercussions from the SRF program if, if we don't list it in the ordinance. But that was their information that they provided to Karen and I was they, they want it in the ordinance and that's basically what it states.
Yeah, I really see it as too full, I think, I think there's a question of whether or not just referencing something outside of the ordinance is sufficient. It clearly is in there that there's going to be additional sums that are coming from Burke and obviously the agreement would be an open record and all those things could be found, but is that sufficient for SRF funding? I think the other concern that Karen has is just as she is retiring, whomever is handling that portion is gonna be easy to find, are they gonna be searching through mountains of different documents to try to figure out what the amounts are owing each year, because it's a twenty-year amortization, the monthly amount, so I think those are, those are the concerns. I think we could, I think we can live with it either way, obviously the preference from staff is to have it in the ordinance.
Well, as if, you know, during any negotiation, I want us to do what's best for us. I don't think it's worth dying on that hill though for, so I'd say, you know, take a stab at it, let's see if we can get it figured out, but I think that we should try and get this wrapped up by next meeting if at all possible.
But you're gone at the next meeting, right? So would it be the first meeting in November?
Uh, we can put it on the next one as well, I'll, I'll be here virtually, I just won't be here in person, so I'll, yeah, so we, we can put it on the next one, discuss it as well and hopefully we'll further along and they, we have a signed copy by then. But, yeah, we can definitely put it on the next one if I mean, I'd like to get it done as soon as possible and if we can have it on the next one, that would be great because that would set us closer to changing the rates after the third reading and after it's published.
I guess I'd say to Steve's point, if, if they're not gonna negotiate with us, move forward.
Awesome, thank you.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yeah.
I'll move that we table this item until next meeting.
Second.
Other discussion? Please vote.
Well. I'm working.
I'm working, Steve's.
Operator Eric.
Okay. She's table has been approved. To Aaron's point, moving on to number nine, ordinance number ten seventy-four, an ordinance amending code of ordinances of the city Nevada Iowa two thousand and six by amending provisions pertaining to the sewer, sewer use charges for a streeting.
I'll move to table that one as well.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Item's been tabled. Item ten, approved pay request number forty-one wastewater treatment improvements, phase three from Boomer Incorp in the amount of zero dollars.
Moved to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Did do a tour down there with an intern last Friday, it's looking nice, gotten things going.
Approved. Item eleven, approved pay request number four for West Indian Creek, SRF project A from RW Excavating Solutions in the amount of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred, three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, just so I got this clear, those dead trees.
They will be removed.
Will be removed.
Yeah, so. Not. They will, they're part of our project, so we will be removing them, the reason construct didn't remove them is because the amount was if I remember right, around thirty-five hundred dollars, so right now we have an agreement with with Rob's Tree Service that he will remove all of our ash trees for six hundred and seventy dollars per tree, so he is going to be removing those and getting rid of them since they are ash tree and they are, are dead, so.
Were they alive when we started this project?
No. But it was covered in, it was all covered in foliage, so we, we didn't, there's a lot of trees in there, big trees, so we didn't necessarily see them at that point, it was when they're uncovered as well.
So.
When'd you come up?
With dead trees on.
Linking anyway.
Yeah, so they were amongst a bunch of other alive trees, but these specific trees were left thinking that they were alive.
No. They didn't catch them when they reviewed everything.
Who's they?
Our engineers should have caught them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So I have a little bit more information.
Thank you.
Because I, I called them because I thought it was silly that those were the only trees that were left were dead ash trees, so I actually called and inquired about that and they had just, um, back, way back when, just designated the trees as deciduous or not, okay, or evergreen or something like that, so I would have to say that they use old data when they were doing this. However, moving forward for the next project, we are going to walk that and we are going to ensure that the trees that stay are not ash trees and are thriving, growing trees, so that did get missed on walking, walking that project, but I did question it and unfortunately that was the answer that we got, so those were the trees that were slated to stay, which did not make any sense, but that's the best I have for information for you on that.
Yeah, but I'm, I know everybody else has gotten questions about them and so forth, so I just wanted to make sure that's.
There are a lot of trees, there are a lot of trees that were not actually part of the project that we opted to remove them because they were dead and it made no sense to keep them, so some of these change orders that we've seen over the last several months have included all of that tree removal. RW has done a really good job, that's who did the first project, they did a really good job of notifying us, reaching out and giving us a really good deal on removing them, so that is why it was a little bit different because they actually added those in there and talked with us before.
This is a different concept, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, should have my question on the next one.
My bad. Not RW.
Okay. All ahead.
Motion for that?
It is.
We are detailed.
Oh, did we? Okay. Please vote. Passed. Item twelve, approved pay request number one for tributary to West Indian Creek, SRF project B from construct in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-eight cents.
If you please.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Everything I said before, put it on this one.
Yeah.
This isn't the company talk.
Any other discussion? Please vote. Passed. Item thirteen, approved change order number one for tributary to West Indian Creek, SRF project B from construct in the amount of twenty-one thousand, five dollars and fifty cents.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Asked. Item fourteen, approved change order number two for Oak Park Estates Trail from Midstate Solution LLC in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any holdups on this? Seems like it's, I've been standing still.
No. We're just waiting on the attorney to do some stuff. You're talking, you're talking about.
The trail.
Trail? Oh, sorry, I was onto the next one. The trail, so the only issue that we had with the trail was regarding a line and removing certain part of it or burying some of the line. But for the most part, everything is going good, the, that was the, the main issue was the lines that were there and the trees that were in the way, but since that was resolved, they should be able to move forward with that and have it done pretty soon, all of the rock is laid.
Yeah.
And so they should be getting done really soon.
I came by it tonight and it looked like it's really close.
I can check with Ryan to see where we're at with that, he's been the one attending those meetings for it, so I'll, I can get with him tomorrow and talk with him about where it's at.
It looks like some work was getting done on the, the connection to Eighth Street part.
Oh, okay, and I couldn't see that from quick, so, sure. Just seemed like stood still for over a week, I was like.
Yeah, drive back in there around it and on top of. On top of that, what took them the longest was retaining wall that they're building as well, the retain took a lot of time. Uh, so that was the other main issue with it was getting that built.
Looking forward to it. Be awesome.
Please vote.
Not popping up, but it's.
Okay.
I'm sorry, no, I'm not sure what happened.
Passed.
Passed.
Alright.
Hundred percent.
Uh, item fifteen, ordinance number ten seventy-three and ordinance amending the Nevada Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter twenty-eight. They have senior community center board, third and final reading.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Who, who moved? It's still in discussion.
Please vote. Approved. Item sixteen, resolution number twenty-one, resolution setting date for public hearing on urban renewal plan amendment. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion on this? Please vote. Approved. Item seventeen, resolution number twenty-two, resolution to fix a date of meeting at which it is proposed for approve a development agreement with Nevada Economic Development Council. E, including annual appropriation tax increment, payments and amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item eighteen, approved purchase of speed ladder with camera.
Right, so, um, you should have the action form in front of you, but. Annually, we apply for a GTSB grant that includes the overtime hours, but also some equipment. Uh, GTSB focuses on traffic enforcement and impaired driving enforcement. Uh, one of the purchases we budgeted for with our grant was to purchase a new LiDAR speed camera, um. LiDAR is, so we have radar in our cars to detect speed, LiDAR is like a. A laser that you put on the front that, um, bumper of the car and you get the speed off that as well. Uh, we have two of them, they, they were here when I started, so they're kind of outdated a little bit. Um, more and more with technology, we want to be able to show that that vehicle relates to. Um, what speed we captured, so, uh, like. LiDARs are coming updated with cameras, you get a still photo of the laser beam hitting the front bumper and capturing the speed. Uh, we were looking at one of those, uh, we have three quotes in front of you, um, I am. Our recommendation is the, the highest bid, it's three hundred and four dollars higher than any other bid. Um, part of those reasons are, uh, there's two main manufacturers that have been around for years, one stalker, one is MPH. Uh, the LiDAR is a stalker product, which is, has a track history of being. Um, a reliable product, uh, then next we looked at the storage, so every. Every capture is going to be a photograph of the vehicle, so. Uh, larger storage capacity with this one, a higher resolution, so you could make out the plate. Better, has a state detection on the plate, so you'll know it's an Iowa plate with, you know, license plate, this is what going that speed. Um, those are the main reasons why we were looking at that product versus the others, um, so I'll answer any questions you have.
I'll move to approve option one.
Second.
Yeah, the discussion.
Yeah, getting the resolutions huge, as I. Know very well, trying to capture a license plate, uh, moving vehicle, vehicle going past our buses is sometimes difficult. So if you don't have good resolution, it's, makes it hard.
Please vote. Item nineteen, approved twenty twenty-six city wellness program.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this, uh, been taken advantage of quite a bit, or do we have like a percentage of people that are taking advantage of this?
Um, there's a pretty decent amount that take advantage, advantage of the physical activity side of things. Uh, I would have to check with Donna, maybe Aaron knows a little bit, but. I'd have to check with Donna to see about the re- reimbursements. I know there are several people that do return. Some of their sheets such as the dental, physical, um, their flu or COVID shot, things like that to get reimbursed on it. Uh, but I don't know. Full count of it, but, uh, it's. It is a good benefit and I know there's a lot of, all of our employees do this, but. Some of them just forget to take their sheets and get it signed by doctors and. Um, you know, for firefighters there, the requirement for the physical, so. I might all of them too.
Sorry, I reached out to several employees and they were all pretty happy with it and glad that we had it. And I think they all use it too.
Well, it's a good concept to promote, for sure.
Yeah. Please vote. Volunteer side alone. Approved. Item twenty, approved closure of City Hall Monday, October twentieth, twenty twenty-five from eight AM to ten thirty AM for employee benefits meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is, is this twice a year we do this or just once a year?
So for this one, th- this is specifically for the health insurance and the, and the benefits, so, um. We've, we've gone through several meetings with our health insurance and we want to make sure that every employee has an opportunity to know what's going on with the health insurance. Uh, since they are responsible for paying for a portion of it. And so we want to be able to provide that option with it. The other thing that you're thinking of is the. Annual safety and wellness that we do, yeah.
We need council approval for this, or? We don't do like holiday votes?
Well, because we're changing the hours, right?
Yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I would prefer to have councils approval on it.
Working back.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Please vote. Approved. Moving on to report, Chief, anything?
Um, I don't really have much other than, uh, what my report was in email. I did want to reference a, a topic that's been brought up recently as far as peddlers, um, by our city code, a peddler's person. Who takes goods from door to door for onsite sales, uh, there have been contractors for roofing, siding, solar. Going door to door, talking about the services they could provide, but they're not offering sale, onsite sales, which. Kind of ties our hands as far as making them have a peddler's permit, uh, we do ask them to check in, we put their information on Facebook, but we don't endorse or. Um, reject any, any person, we just try to educate the community as much as we can. Um, Kathy and I have been talking about that over the last couple of days, so. One thing I've asked her to do is start looking into what other cities have, see what their ordinances look like and make sure that we're consistent with them. Um, and to, to do the best service for the community, but otherwise, answer any questions you have.
Thanks. Marloes? Rhonda?
Um, I don't have any.
Empty house tonight, Jordan?
Alright, had a Main Street meeting. Couple of different health insurance meetings, which is leading on to this next one that we're having that you guys just approved for closing City Hall a couple of hours. We had safety training on, on fire safety and that was a pretty fun training exercise that we did. And then, uh, that WHKS a couple of times, one was to review the initial. Feedback from the, the smoking the sewers and they will be providing a final report for that. Also talked with them about Harrington Park and a long-term plan for that. I'm sure Rhonda will have some more on that later on in a, an additional council meeting. At a meeting with the League of Cities and I, there's a, a gentleman that keeps reaching out to the city. Wanting to talk with us about solar energy and we're trying to figure out what to do with the large field that we have. To the north of our current, our new wastewater treatment facility and. That was brought up, so I've been talking with him about that. Uh, that program specifically is of no cost to the city, but we would need to talk with. Uh, consumers' energy and, and see if that's even available, if we can do that, because that is where we get our energy from. So you need to reach out to consumers and talk with them about that. Had our manufacturing breakfast. Spoke to Dorsey and Whitney a couple of times, couple of those were regarding what was on the agenda tonight. And also had our NEDC meeting. Any questions?
Anything in council?
Copy of the council is November first and is Mayor Condon and Mr. Corbin. Oh, and I need to welcome my mom who snuck in at the very end too. She just moved here in August and is learning all about how everything works in town.
Welcome.
She's glad that I pointed her.
Alright. I don't have anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All favor?
I.